Let me signify the United States of America to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the principle of liberty, justice for all.
Oh, welcome back, welcome back, everyone. We will start tonight as always with comments from the audiences. Or anyone in the audience this evening who would like to make a public comment? Sit forward, please, name and address for record.
Right, either one.
Either one, I'll follow you, go ahead.
Name, right, name and address.
Kate Duffy, eight Stonehedge Lane.
Danae Johnston, eleven Hopey Road.
And we are here tonight representing Project Graduation, and we are making a request for the graduation date to be set tonight.
Please, we're here to support that. We see it's on the agenda. We hope you can make that happen.
Be much appreciated for planning.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? All right, hearing none. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
To routine business items, do we have a bunch of minutes to approve? Uh, starting, we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty four V O E business meeting? So. Second. Uh, do we have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Want to oppose, I'm saying, I think it hurts, like. All right, now, can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty first, twenty twenty four Board of Education Special Meeting?
So.
And Maria, do we have any questions, comments, edits for these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Now, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty four Board of Education Special Meeting.
So. Second.
And then Chris, do we have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And finally, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty second, twenty twenty four Board of Education Work Session.
So.
Ben and Chris, we have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, uh, to Board of Ed Committee Reports on Finance.
Hey. So far, the budget has been extended five percent as compared to last year, which was also five percent. And special education, of course, is an ever-changing landscape, but no new found that. Um, there were no transfers in Jan- uh, July and August. And, uh, the twenty twenty three, twenty four budget has been closed out. And the Board of Education is returning an unaudited amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars to the town of Fulton. And I'm going to go to the superintendent.
Thank you. So, um, first, we have some transfers in June, um, to go over, and you will need to, um, vote on those, please. So we had a reclass to cover shortfall for spring athletic awards, another reclass for shortage of graduation gowns, a reclass to purchase some science classroom instructional materials, uh, to cover purchase of bump armor pieces for, uh, the Chromebooks at B H S. Um, a reclass to purchase some central office supplies that we needed, a reclass to cover, uh, book purchases, because, uh, the administrators or admin team were in the middle of a book study. Reclass to cover additional custodian shirts. Um, we get them shirts periodically, it says custodian on them. They were looking a little not so good, so we needed to get some new shirts for them. Uh, reclass to purchase a replacement toaster oven, um, and toaster for the V O E kitchen. Reclass to purchase E S Y instructional supplies, a reclass to cover shortfall in graduation expenses. A reclass to purchase some P D resources, a reclass to cover shortfall in V O E purchase services, and a reclass, uh, for the upgrade of the B C S controllers for the door intercom system due to parts being discontinued. And I'll just offer, stay tuned on that one, because we are continuing to have some issues there. And, um, working with Novus and Neil Kerr, uh, now from Minuteman Press, in fact, we have a meeting on Monday. So, hey, now we have a patch, and I'm hoping that, um, what we hear on Monday is a new fix. So, stay tuned for that. Any questions for me on those?
Did you say we're working with?
No, um, Neil Kerr, here from town, had been the person that we had utilized for this first system. And his company has been bought by Minuteman Press, or Minuteman, maybe it's not Press, by Minuteman. Yeah, I think I, I may have added Press, because I thought about Minuteman Press, yeah, exactly, there is, yeah, so that could have been my bad, so sorry about that. I think it's Minuteman.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so can we have a motion to approve the June transfer recommended by the Superintendent?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Really on top of things, so I, any questions, comments?
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so next, um, I just wanna, um, go over, um, last year's budget. Um, these are unaudited at this point, um. We, um, are returning eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars out of regular instruction, primarily driven by, um, the savings left over from the athletic trainer. Um, and then that we did not have, because not available. Um, and then savings from the Gizmos, um, in science that is used, um, technology platform that we, uh, ended up doing a prepay for two years' subscription on the renewals and saved some money there. In terms of special education, um, we were in the black, which is great news, um, to the tune of a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars, because there were some changes that occurred. Um, I, I just want to give kudos to Cassal for always budgeting conservatively with regards to, um, our excess costs, um, because state redid formulas and, um, we were really spot on with what Cassal had done, so that was, that was really good. Um, in administration and support, forty-four thousand nine dollars, um, primarily driven from some savings in legal costs, P Ds and supplies, as well as, um, some savings from, um, projected, uh, insurance deductible that wasn't fully expended. Some of that balance will have to be paid in this calendar year, and savings on P D and travel and supplies. In operations and transportation, we had a savings of ninety-nine thousand, seventy dollars. Sixty-three thousand of that was savings from utilities, repairs, and maintenance services, parts and supplies. Um, we were able to do a lot of the, um, maintenance things that we had to do last year in-house, so we didn't have to hire outside consultants, although we may have had to purchase the supplies outside. That isn't always the case, that doesn't always happen, sort of like the intercom system. It isn't something Novus can fix, it's not something John Butromovich can fix. So, there'll be costs there, and then savings due to credits, um, from the bus company, again, kudos to Cassal and Amy for being on top, and to Joe and Daryl for charting every single time, um, a bus did not run and keeping, um, our business office in lockstep with that, so we were right on top of the bus company for some refunds there. And then, you know, our largest amount comes out of salaries and benefits, and I just want to remind everybody that is due to the fact that we had multiple unfilled positions last year. Um, I'm happy to say that as of tomorrow, um, it is my, it's our intention that we will be fully staffed for teachers, great news, we are still short four paraprofessionals. So, anybody in the audience or who's listening knows if anybody who's interested in being a full-time or a part-time paraprofessional, we'd love to talk to you. Um, so, and just a reminder that, uh, the board committed three hundred and fifty thousand towards this year's budget, so this remaining balance of commitment will go towards next year's budget. Any questions on this item? Okay, hearing none. Ria did share, we do not have any transfers, I think she shared, in July and August for this year. And then, the, the last part, the other part, um, so far for this year, we are projecting full expenditure. It's just too early to project anything else at this point in time, so that's sort of a stay tuned. And then the last part are our non-fiduciary, uh, accounts, and, um, these are fund balances as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, for accounts that, um, by town, uh, ordinance, I think it's an ordinance, can be rolled over from year to year, so we have some accounts at Bolton Center School, whether it be general, store, library for payment for lost and damaged books, P B I S, pay-to-play, art, and world language. And then at the high school for officials, uh, for ticket and gate receipts for athletics, for A P exam in and out. Um, there was a consolidation of non-fiduciary accounts. This was a result of an audit finding that it happened a number of years ago. You may remember seeing this in the audit, and we had to work collaboratively with the Board of Selectmen, because they had to, um, pass it in order for us to be able to have these non-fiduciary recurring accounts. So until they did that, we couldn't firm up this process. Um, and then we have, um, donation, uh, that was made, um, in memory of, of a person. Some collections from students and fundraising for art department, for band and chorus, for technology department, which is primarily the building of sheds that our tech ed department does, um, F C S out of the library. Um, and just a general, uh, student account for class, clubs, activities, and such. So, uh, looking for, um, a, a motion to approve the non-fiduciary fund balances as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and to be carried over to the F Y fiscal year. And then we will send this on to the Board of Selectmen. That one, that have to take it out.
So. Second. You've done it, Chris. Do we have any questions, comments about, uh, any of the non-fiduciary funds?
I have a question about how they're used.
Mm-hmm.
How's that tracked?
So, Joe, can you speak to how they're tracked at your school?
Uh, individual tasks?
Yes.
Yeah, so Kelly Goldsider actually is, is tasked with that, and she has literally a ledger of every dollar in, every dollar out. Um, anytime an advisor goes to deposit or withdraw, there's a signature on that, and then I get monthly reports that I sign off on. I don't know if that's what you're asking her.
And then it's also monitored, then by Cassal and by Amy, and the same thing happens at Daryl's school with one of his admin assistants.
Good. Now, what about the ones where you have some discretion on how they're paid out, for like the ticket gate receipts?
Still, every dollar in and every dollar out has to be accounted for, and the principals.
Okay, but how, how, I mean, there's, there's like, there's almost twenty-five thousand dollars in that account. Is there a plan for that money? How, how is it normally spent, and how is that spending shared with the board?
So, sometimes it's spent for, for example, one year, we didn't have a, um, like a scorekeeper, well, we had a scorekeeper's table, it was like a hold-up table. And we then, you know, so we paid for it, and it was expensive, right, a scorekeeper, so it kind of is contingent upon, like, what is needed within athletics. You know, maybe we need new soccer nets at some point, and instead of maybe asking boosters or the Board of Ed to finance that, ticket gate receipts may go towards that.
So it's.
Maybe a fan bus for when we're, you know, in states or something, right?
Right, right. Is there a process for either staff or the public or the board to propose how those funds are spent, or is it completely up to the administration?
It's up to the administration, so like David will come to Joe and say, for example, I'll use that scorer's table as a perfect example. Then Joe and David came to Kristen and said, you know, you have a fold-up table, and this is what we need, or, you know, we want to do this, or I can't think of, can you think of some other examples of athletic wise?
No, like things that we didn't anticipate. The, the other thing I just reminded the board is that the athletic department is not fully funded.
Right.
Right, so a lot of, and we don't charge a lot of gate, but obviously even basketball games, right, we can do that. Um, the pay-to-play, all of those funds that come in subsidize what's in the budget to make the athletic program happen. And then depending on how many students we have in particular year, how many extra buses, what, what breaks, um, it, it's not a fixed expectation. So those funds subsidize the pay-to-play and funding to make those things happen.
Is, is that actually happening though? Because there were no dispersments last year.
When needed, right, when needed, so we, we must have taken, we took in enough for pay-to-play last year to address athletic officials, all the other pieces.
Yeah, there's other, yeah, maybe, I just, so the, the ticket is, is one sub-bus within that. There's lots of other, there's one just for officials, right, and just.
Oh, right, right, so you're saying that if you maybe didn't have as many students, stuff up, yes, play sports, you would have less pay-to-play, so you might have to dip into this.
Correct, because you still need officials, right?
Right, right.
Right, whether we've got twenty-two kids on the bench, I'll use basketball as an example, or we have sixteen.
Okay, just, just trying to make sure I understand.
No, it's a great question. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, great question, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Everybody? Oh, right, that's it for finance, corrects?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, on to personnel, the, uh, Personnel Committee has met to discuss the, the beginning of the process to hire a new superintendent, which we'll be, uh, discussing more later on this evening. And we have a meeting upcoming to discuss our contract, upcoming negotiations with paraprofessionals and admin assistants, which are both just coming here. Uh, policy.
Policy didn't really meet, although Kristen and I communicated by email since the two of us.
Right now?
I know. Uh, we, yeah, we have a couple of policies to put forward tonight, um, talk about those later.
All right, on to B H S Student Representative Report.
So, the, uh, the band and choir performed last night at the Bolton Firehouse for the annual nine eleven memorial cer- ceremony. We appreciate the opportunity to support our community, uh, in remembering the tragedy. We hope we perform well and respectfully, make sure the day was properly memorialized. Um, tomorrow, the senior class will be hosting the annual senior sunrise, which will be held at Herdage Farm this year, which is a much better view than the soccer field. Uh, the senior class is very much looking forward to this event, despite the early hour, and we hope we have as much fun as possible. Uh, next, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Feel free to ask what you're.
I have to start. What time is that?
Uh, five forty-five in the morning. The sunrise is at six twenty-eight, and we, uh, budgeted time to have food and practice, we said, we're gonna enjoy ourselves, but it's going to be very early. Uh, next week is Start With Hello Week, for which the student council will plan multiple spirit days to encourage students to reach out to their peers and make new connections. Fending approval, of course, the student council hopes to have a please and flannel day, a superhero day, a green day to support the Sandy Hook Promise, a student-teacher outfit swap day, where students dress like their teachers and vice versa, and a twin day.
In order to welcome the class of twenty twenty-eight into Bolton High School, the student council continued their annual tradition of decorating the hallways for the school with their class colors for the first day. In addition, the Bolton High School Athletic Department has had many celebrations. The boys' cross-country team won their meet at Stafford High School, and for the girls, Dahlia Livingston won, Amber Fox placed second, and Emma DeRosa seventh. The boys also won the Stratton Brook Invitational for Class S this past Saturday, and Dahlia Livingston placed seventh. The girls' volleyball team won their, won their first game against East Windsor on Tuesday, making their record one to three. The boys' soccer team is undefeated for the start of their season, their record being two oh, and they're playing a game tonight, which we don't have the results for yet. And the girls' soccer team has been fighting for a win, but has a record of oh to three so far this season.
Thank you both very much. I'm sure that you want to stay, because you're not getting up early or anything tomorrow, and that you don't have any homework, but feel free to go, and thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.
Have fun tomorrow morning.
Yeah, well, it's not exciting about the early hour, but it'll be fine.
It's gonna be a beautiful sunrise.
I hope so.
All righty, on to community meeting reports. Uh, do we have any community meetings? I know over the summer, I, I can't think of any, but so do we have any P T A news that anyone would like to share?
I guess I can shut up. Um, see here, we had, uh, welcome back to school, we provided the kindergarten and, uh, bags, welcome bags, um, it's all stuff for back to school for the teacher, sorry, I'm trying to think on time, I had, um, we had our back-to-school movie night last Friday, uh, went really well. Well-attended, but we got here and up for the big Sunbreezer, uh, water fun coming up in October, so we're looking for sponsors, so. Sorry, um, if, so if you know anybody that wants to sponsor, get their name on the T-shirts, now is the time, with all that, it. All I got for it.
All righty, uh, now turn things over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent's School Reports.
All right, so I'm gonna start by introducing Director Goldsider, who's going to give you a little update about E S Y this past summer.
Good evening. We had another very successful E S Y program, that's our extended school year program. We had a number of students participate. Students arrived every day eager, when they got off the bus, eager to learn, and they worked really hard on their emerging skills, maintenance of skills, and self-sufficiency skills. In addition, student attendance was better this year than it's ever been, so we're really happy. We had kids who wanted to come to school this summer, so it was kind of exciting. Um, I'd like to thank all the teachers, related services staff, paraprofessionals, students, and parents for all collaborating to make it a really great summer program.
Thank you. Any questions for our, our summer program? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna turn it over next to stopping update.
Right, we have been very busy with hiring the new staff, and we're all involved in that process, all the administrators and teachers. We have great new staff, we're all very excited, there's an energy in the buildings that is just, it's contagious. So we're really, really happy with all of our new staff. We have, I won't go into all of the detail with names and everything, but hopefully as of tomorrow, Orange Jinx, that's all not kind of fake word, I guess, and say as of tomorrow, we will hopefully have hired seven teachers at Bolton Center School. In addition to teachers, we have a new school nurse, a new school psychologist, and a custodian, so that's B C S. At the high school, we have five new teachers, and we have an administrative assistant in the guidance office. Central office, we have an administrative assistant for Monica, so that's a new addition for us. And district-wide, we have a B C B A, which is our behavior analyst. So we have a lot of new staff, lots of new energy, a lot of new ideas. I think we're all really excited by, by all of the, uh, you know, just all of it, this, it feels like really good to us. We still do have four paraprofessional position, parareducator, soon to be parareducator position, um, open, so if anybody is looking, call, let me know. So I have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, onto Mr. Giard for an update from B C S.
Evening, everybody. If you're remiss not to say, we've had a busy last couple of days with a few interruptions, which I wanted to say that before my update, which is the sixth start of school has been very successful. Uh, obviously, the last two days have been a little bit disrupted, and I'd be remiss not to mention that. Uh, but we've had a successful opening of school with P D with staff, three-day week, four-day week, and now a five-day week, so we've worked our way right into it. All of the usual beginning of school pieces, like students finding their classrooms, kindergarten students starting to ride the bus, and new schedules have gone very well. Uh, this just doesn't happen. Mrs. Bayer, myself, and the academic leaders met four times over the summer to plan for the opening of school, and that's integral to, uh, making that be successful. The building and grounds especially looks amazing, and this is because of the great work of the custodians and John Butromovich. Uh, this is not an exhaustive list, but I wanted to point out some of the excellent work that they completed this summer. They've been cleaning and disinfecting regularly, especially during the E S Y program, and that Director Goldsider mentioned. Desks haven't scrubbed and walls washed, all the filters were changed in the ventilation system to keep them operating as recommended. The floors haven't scrubbed and waxed, carpeted areas have been shampooed, outside areas have been weeded, mowed, trimmed shrubs, mulching, generally getting ready for the first day of school. Uh, maintenance has been doing all the repairs to the classrooms, which included putting in some new faucets, replacing damaged floor and ceiling tiles, and painting the front pillars of the school. We had three larger projects this summer, one of them just finishing up this week. The first was all the exterior doors to the school, so the functionality is now, they're working, and they're also, school security is a big part of that, so now they're, they're much more secure as well as being functional. The second was the first phase of replacing the main control to the H vac system that's been installed. Third was the removal of the greenhouse, and as I said, they're finishing out this week with installing the windows on the side of where the greenhouse was. Uh, required inspections of the fire alarm system, sprinklers, fire extinguisher, and kitchen hood vent systems have been completed. The basketball hoops and bleachers have also been inspected and maintenance performed, and the fire marshal did the beginning of walk, uh, walk around the school, the beginning of school. As I mentioned earlier, it's been a nice start to the year, and we're excited to have this clear underway.
Any questions for Mr. Giard?
We got the fire curtain done, right?
Yes.
Fire marshal like that, to just give us a business and all of those things.
Exactly.
All right, I'm turning it over to Mr. Muselli. Thank you, Mr. Giard.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, so B H S is off to a great start. We are fully staffed, um, and our new teachers, new teachers have already immersed themselves in the positive culture here at B H S. Our grade nine kickoff before school even opened was a huge success. Uh, there were three families that notified us that they couldn't attend, and then beyond that, there was only one other grade nine student that did not attend that day. So huge thanks to the grade nine teachers and the school counselors who made the day a big success. And then I'm really grateful for all the upperclassmen who joined us, that start kickoff to our Bigs and Littles program, had a large number of, uh, juniors and seniors with us as well. Last week, we welcomed the Bolton High School families into our school for our annual open house, huge turnout, and, uh, I was very happy to have a, a very successful meeting, first meeting with senior parents at the end of that evening. Um, so just like Mr. G, our chair, Mr. Butromovich and his crew were very busy this summer. Um, all, all the things Daryl talked about, about the grounds and the cleaning and the, and the scrubbing and the walls, I won't repeat at all, it's exactly the same. Um, they did replace all the light bulbs in the gym, which was a large task, um, and we're at the point where we're changing a lot of ballast and power supplies for lighting as we go. Luckily, that's something that we can do in-house, um, and work has also continued to be done, the A D A transition pads out front. Uh, the new batting cage for baseball and softball is underway, the base area has been excavated, and the stone bust, stone dust base is installed. All the required inspections, including the hoops and the bleachers, all that is done, and a couple of very small items the fire marshal saw on his inspection here were, uh, remedied by the end of that business day. Um, I will say the building is starting to show its age in some ways. Uh, we had an electrical issue with a pump that has been resolved, uh, and we are waiting more information on the repairs that will be needed to one of our electrical transfer switches that is having some problems.
Thank you.
Any questions?
When you say the building, are you referring to the new addition or to the original?
Um, to, to both, because it's the mechanical systems within, because everything was replaced in the old one as well, right? It was renovated as new. They even took down the outside walls, right, when they did that. So, we're talking not about the physical structure, but some of the, like the electric ballast, for example, right, which would be the same age throughout, throughout the structure. Thank you. Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you. I do want to give a shout-out, um, to John Butromovich and the guys, um, they did a great job, there's a lot of work to be done. Particularly to John, I just want to make the board aware that John was also in charge of the road crew in Bolton this summer, um, until they hired, uh, a new supervisor for that, so, um, he needs a vacation, I think he has worked tirelessly, day and night, um, all summer long, so just a big shout-out to John and, and thank him very much. And now we're on to our assessment results, and Monica, please.
So we are here for our annual presentation of the assessment results, uh, this is. Our usual start, which is a annual state testing, um, what is required is smarter balance assessment, the next generation science standards, and connect S A T, uh, they describe student achievement and growth. Uh, it's only one measure, just something to keep in mind, and it is a source of guidance for us in our work with students, our works at the building level, uh, with leadership teams and in teacher healcies. It is not a substitute for a number of other assessments. We have many things in place, particularly with our early readers. So, we have had, we used, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two is already a baseline. We have areas that we have quite a few bright spots and a couple of areas where we know we need to work, some strong classes, and. And again, with the percentages, which are always tough in a slowest signs. Um, we are aware that we have a, a, of a drop in grade eight. So you know, that represents six students. So that is a luxury of being able to target individual kids, which is nice and see what they're doing. And last year, we talked extensively about M T S S and multi-tiered systems of support. That is where you will utilize, you know, your teams to look at things like, are we having any issues with attendance? Are students missing the same class day after day? Um, do we need to bring in, say, a social worker to help support their family? Or do we need to shift something in the curriculum because there's one spot or a couple of spots that students are struggling with in a particular grade level? So our discussion points, we did outperform, outperform the state of Connecticut at every level in English language arts, we saw growth. At times significant growth in grades four, five and seven. We did have that unexpected dip in grade eight. So we are looking, I know that Mrs. Bear has started that actually just this week in, um, the instructional leadership team. Are they looking at their data currently? And we are, what the specific gaps and needs are for our students. And we review student achievement throughout the year because we want to adjust the curriculum. If there's something that we think we're not spending enough time on. Maybe we need to a little bit, give them a little bit more attention to, and this is how we start to measure that. Um, and also determine what professional need, uh, learning needs are in place. Our next steps, we're gonna continue to measure the efficacy of our new reading curriculum in K to six. Um, they did shift in January to perform in K to three. They're very excited about that. Um, and then we have some S F and P D coming up. Uh, we wanna make sure our interventions are scientifically research-based. Uh, we're providing support. We are doing more work with the interim assessment blocks this year. Those are little blocks of assessment that are based on the smarter balance, so that students have a chance to, to practice what they're going to be asked. They ask questions in a very different way. Frequently, there's no one right answer. It's like choose the two best answers. We know that sometime, when we look at our data, we know that students struggle with that. So we need to give them a little bit more practice with it. Um, expanded literacy assessment, um, at B H S. And the reason B H S is up there is because our eighth grades are, they're going into ninth grade. So we've been talking since last year about what we can do to measure, um, student comprehension and reading comprehension. And ongoing instructional coaching and support. Math, um, again, we are exceeding the, uh, state in most areas. I think in one area it might be neck and neck, but only by maybe point two percent. Again, we're seeing, um, some eighth grade serves that we have to share with ninth grade, and that's where that goes. Um, for that, we have slight growth in almost every cohort. There's some growth. I think we would like to see more. Um, but there is growth at every grade level. We do have some skills gaps in upper elementary and early middle still. That they're working on. I think that the math coach, you can see where, um, she came in, that that has been very helpful. And grade four has always had a bit of a curricular leap. So grade four, grade seven is another one, but in grade four, the curriculum. Even pre our current standards, made a huge jump in E L A in math. And that is the big shift where students are expected to apply their learning. So sometimes that can be a really big jump for them. And, um. We always wanna focus on them, see how their, um, how their performance is and how they move through the grade levels. Um, we want to examine the results of our universal screening tool. We are, so far, we're happy with I ready. But I think we weren't digging deep enough and we did some professional learning last year to make sure that we were utilizing the reports in a way that was going to be even more useful. Um, together with the new math coach, we've got the P L C focus, support for struggling learners. Um, we continue with the multi-step problems because we know that that is an area where students need more support. Instead of just simple calculation and the interim assessment, assessment block, yeah. Next generation science standards, we are, you know, we're really holding steady. We're still up there again. Um, at the places where there is a slight drop, I think at the most I've looked and it is three students. So there are a number of factors that could, uh, be involved there. And the Connecticut School Day S A T, again, same exact, it's, it's essentially the same exact score. Uh, that difference is because we had a different number of students in that class. So the same, it's, um, holding to be about the same. And in math, a slight increase. Again, we had a smaller, um, a slightly larger number of students, two extra students this year than last year, I believe, took the assessment. So next steps, this bullet has been there for a while, but we have had, um, new math instructors joining us. We wanna make sure that they are able to have the professional learning opportunities that they need. And I'm excited that our new, uh, goal setting really focuses on professional learning. So we can help them identify what kind of skills they think they need support in, so that they can better serve our students. We're always reviewing our curriculum assessment data. Uh, we, uh, know that they focus on S S U data and P L Cs at B H S. And they look at how they can work on those scores and what skills students need with academic leaders in both mathematics and E L A. And again, finding out, we, I think there was a question last year about all of the professional learning opportunities that happened. We were able to make a great deal of professional development occur last year without taking people away from their classes. Without having much of an impact on students and making sure that we can work with half-day times. Um, full-day P Ds and make sure our teachers get, um, training that they think is going to be effective and helpful for them and our students. Any question? Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And that concludes my report this evening. Don't go far, Monica.
Unfinished.
Switching it, I know.
The next item of unfinished business that we have is our educator diversity plan.
Okay, um, in February of last year, we presented the educator diversity plan. Per statute from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Uh, we did submit that by March. When we received feedback, we were conditionally approved. And we were in good company. Most districts were conditionally approved. Um, uh, Superintendent Hector and I had a meeting with, I think, representatives from West End that, that were contracted with. The Connecticut State Department of Education, and they provided some guidance to us. Um. Such as it is. And it was a little bit less, um.
It was not direct at all.
It was not directed, I guess. Okay. So a little bit less helpful than I think we would have liked it to have been. Um, our feedback was not, uh, to change one thing or to change another. It was sort of like, we're wondering about this. So our question was, what exactly are you wondering about? Uh, and looking for an answer to those questions. Um, we did have some colleagues who had approved plans. So we worked with them. We looked at their plan. And after the meeting and looking at some plans, we added. What we did was we took our plan and added more detail to it. So you have that plan in front of you. It's, it's tiny. I can't really project it. You don't want that, but, um, I think that there were some things in there that we did not think to put in because we just thought they were given. So looking at the EdSite secure dashboard to continue to measure how many diverse staff members we had. I could tell you off the top of my head, how many? We're a very small district. We hadn't put that in writing. So we put that in writing, and that is now in the plan, even though it's a given and it's something that we always do. Um, engaging our, um, surrounding universities and colleges. And bringing in student teachers, pre-student teachers, teacher, pre-service teachers who were doing observations. Um, we didn't necessarily put all of those elements in the plan, even though they were things that were already happening. So what we did is we just fleshed it out a lot more and spread it out over their spreadsheet. So. So generally more detail.
Yep. Questions for us on this? I wanna thank Monica for all her work on this, because. I'd just like to thank Monica for all her work on this. So we'll need a motion to approve this again, please.
Make a motion to.
Remove the increasing educator diversity action plan.
Thank you. I'll second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Right. Anonymous and on to new business and policies. We have a couple of policies that were sent for first read that are all you described.
Yes, so, uh, they're both dealing with, uh, well, they're both our sex, there are two sex discrimination policies. Uh, one is the four one one. Uh, one policy is more focused on the workplace, uh, sex discrimination issues. And five, one, four, five, five applies more broadly to our school. Uh, this is an update to bring both policies into conformance with recent changes. At the federal and state level, uh, some of the changes include expanded definitions. Um, revised grievance procedures, uh, more explanation of the role of the Title IX coordinator. Changes like that, uh.
And it went into effect on August first.
It's already gone into effect, yes.
It'd be great if you saw fit this evening to approve this. Um, I mean, we just received this from shipment. So the minute I got it, I spent two days with it and got it to Chris and. Thank you to Chris for spending, I don't even know how many hours with it, reading it. So. I, I'll leave it up to you guys, but please note, it is already in effect by law.
I mean, usually I don't like doing that, but I, when we have. Legal changes that we're not gonna be discussing or doing anything with, it's fine with me if we. Have anyone that would like to make a motion to approve policy four, one, one, eight point one. Prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. And policy five, one, four, five point five for a busy prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Then that will find, I mean, I'd like a motion to approve both the policies. I second that. Uh, any questions or comments about these policies? Extreme board. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 We are on to the H S graduation date.
Alright, thanks, everybody for that. I appreciate it. So, um, as you heard from our project graduation parents this evening. Um, they've already had conversations with Mr. Moselli and we're asking the board to set the graduation date tonight. Just to remind the board that statutorily, you are allowed to set the graduation date at any point during the school year. As long as it is set on the one hundred and eightieth day from when it is set. So if the board sets the date tonight, the graduation date we're requesting is for Monday, June ninth. Twenty twenty-five, which is the one hundred and eightieth day of school. I think that's helpful to families because if. They have relatives coming in, they can come in over the weekend, they can be there for Monday night and possibly leave Tuesday. Um, so that would be great if. We could do that. And just a reminder that if we have snow days to make up, it would be a non-issue, um, if the board sets the date tonight. Because the seniors and the high school would just work backwards, uh, into the set date. Seniors already do their exams before the other grades do because of what happens at the end of the school year with senior activities. Practice for graduation and such. So looking for a motion to set the date of Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five for the Bolton High School graduation.
I'll make the motion to set the date for graduation.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Alrighty. Now you have graduated.
Now we can plan. Thank you very much. Thank you guys very much.
Um, on to board vacancy. As you are all aware, Sue Pike, for a variety of personal reasons, had to resign her seat on the board. And, uh, on Monday night, the Republican Town Committee, um, had a discussion and. I have received a letter, uh, we came up with a candidate and I asked the chairman to send me a letter. And to assume it may concern, the Bolton Republican Town Committee has nominated and endorsed Chris Duffy to fill the vacant Republican seat on, uh, Bo, B O E. Effective immediately. Any questions or concerns, please contact me. Chris is right there. You may recognize him from attending a number of our meetings for the last couple of years. Um, and finance meetings as well. You can say a couple of words if you so choose. I don't have to get into the detail that you did the other night, but, uh.
No, sure. I'll just introduce myself. Yeah, so I'm Chris Duffy. Um, I've been in Bolton thirteen years. Um, we moved here actually from Michigan, but I grew up in Stafford Springs, uh, before that. Um, I'm an engineer at Wright Whitney. Before that, I was an engineer for a mortar company, very analytical, data-driven person. Um, I've got a daughter in eighth grade, so she'll be coming to this high school next year, I plan. And I've got a son in twelfth grade. He's on his way out, finishing up. So I've got an interest here to help the board. Their board's vacancy has a tremendous amount of work and with a vacancy here, um, I'd like to help. I was actually looking at joining next year and, um, inquiring in the process. I found out there was this vacancy, so kinda, maybe win-win, I hope. But, uh, looking forward to.
Um, so looking for a motion, uh, to appoint Chris Duffy to the Bolton Board of Education.
Make motion to appoint Chris Duffy to the Bolton Board of Ed. I'll second that.
Alright, do we have any questions or comments for Chris or anyone else? It'll be, uh, she has big shoes to fill, but I think that, so you seem to be willing to put in the work, so, um, welcome. And, uh, that's all my comments. So anyone else, all those appear with motion, please say aye.
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 Alright, uh, I will send a letter to the town clerk. No later than mid-morning tomorrow. And, uh, she will put your name in with the Secretary of State, I believe. And at some point at your leisure, you can make your way down and get sworn in, um, which takes all thirty seconds.
But you can't be seated up here until you're sworn in legally by the town clerk for the October meeting. So there is a deadline by that time, okay?
Sixty days pass and the board select, I can appoint somebody. But that's not just November.
I will be in contact. I have packet of information that I've ordered for you. So hopefully you and I can find some time to meet and. I have a lot to share and there's a lot of reading to be done. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome indeed. Alrighty. Uh, Personnel Search Committee.
Sure. So as I've shared, um, it is my intention to retire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, after thirty-five years in public education. Um, I'm very excited that I made it to thirty-five years, I'm not gonna lie. Um, and so at this point. Um, you need to establish yourselves or whoever you wish to establish as the Personnel Search Committee to select the next superintendent of schools. Um, and, um, to begin, the new superintendent to begin on July one of twenty twenty-five.
So, um, we had discussed. Having the, every member of the Board of Ed being the Personnel Search Committee, there will be, um. And we have to. Figure out entirely what it looks like and what the format is, but we are gonna be looking for a lot of community input. Um, it's part of the process. There's gonna be surveys, there's gonna be focus groups and, um. You know, there's gonna be more than just the Board of Ed who's involved in the search. It's gonna be, uh, my intention is to bring whole town in. And, and the staff and teachers and administration, because talk about big shoes to fill, so, um.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be a big job, um, and I think we all want to go about it the right way. And it's, it's very, very important to make sure we find the, the right person. Uh, find them in a time where Kristen can have some, some time to help bring them.
Transition.
On board. So, um, I am looking for a motion to establish a Personnel Search Committee. For the purpose of recommending to the board one or more candidates for the position of Superintendent of Schools. Uh, the following individuals be appointed to the committee. Uh, myself, Andrew Brownell, Ben Davies, Chris Davy, Ria Klein, Ashley Phelan, Diana Pagano and Chris Duffy.
I'll second.
And then Ria, do we have any questions or comments? Our Personnel Search Committee, I have lots of questions about the process, but. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Alright. Now, on a related note, we need to discuss our executive search consultant. So. The way that most school systems and state, um, I don't know how it is outside of the state. The way that most school systems and state, I don't know how it is outside of the state, but. Typically, none of us have the expertise needed to. Have a superintendent search and. Go about publicizing it, attracting the right individuals, figuring out what that community input is going to look like. Figuring out the focus groups and the surveys and all the things. So we have gotten some quotes from some commonly used. Consultants, there are three of them, which we all got in our email last Friday and that the Personnel Committee has discussed. One of them is CAE. One of them is NESDAQ, which is the New England School Development Council. And one of them is CES, which.
Cooperative Educational Services.
Kristen reached out to each of these groups and they sent us our proposal, we want a. Description of anything, I don't know if we all got a chance to absorb the three, we did discuss it in personnel. But since then, we did get a third. Third opinion.
Yeah, I think, you know, in your packet, NESDAQ's number is the lowest. I do think that there will be additional, some additional costs with NESDAQ, once they factor in. What you decide to do for. PR and getting the information out there and what resources you're going to utilize. CAE is the next. More expensive one and then CES was the most expensive three. The NESDAQ. Search consultant happens to be for NESDAQ for this area in Connecticut. Happens to be Mark Wenzler, who is a former Superintendent of Schools in Bolton. He lives right on the Manchester-Bolton line, so he's very familiar with the community. The CAE search consultant is. Has been a search consultant for CAE for a very long time. And the search consultant for CES is also a former superintendent, Dave Irwin. He was superintendent both in Montville. And most recently, Montville and Berlin and has been doing searches for quite a while as well.
I will say that I went through, I'm on a board chair. Email list through CAE and there has been a number of questions about superintendent searches. Dating back to twenty twenty was Elvis that I found. And it was usually somebody posts a question, how do you do this or who did, who did you use? And with the exception of Joe Arori, who's no, no longer able to do that. There were people who had used all three of these providers as a consultant and it seemed like they. All were generally happy with their. Services or what they did, there is. Some warranty information about if the new superintendent doesn't last a couple of years, then you get their services again at no additional charge.
Well, it's a good warranty to have. For those people who have ever worked in a district where. It was a quick turn.
Yeah, we're a member of NESDAQ and we were entitled to a twenty percent off of their fee. So that did bring them lower in price, but they're all. Within a small enough range. We did discuss at the Personnel Committee that, and I. Made Kristen go back to them and verify that we would be getting Mark Wenzler. We did discuss that this is a person who has worked in the town before. Knows the community, is a person who lives right at the edge of our community and. Felt that that might be a, a good reason to have them propelled forward. From what I could see on all three of these, they all have done superintendent searches. Recently and locally. Probably, yeah, I guess they all. I, I guess for me, I thank you for getting the third. Their. Proposal here, but I. I didn't see a lot other than the familiarity of the name that was just mentioned that. Necessarily put one in front of the other.
More, three more expensive than the other ones.
CES is. Yeah, more.
That was the one I thought was.
NESDAQ is the cheapest, but it's not all inclusive, there might be more marketing or other expenses.
They all seem to say. Now, they said if they want us to be like nationwide search, which that's a certain. I thought they all were fairly comparable in that regard as well. Do, do anyone get a chance to read through these, have any opinions on them more so than what we discussed in personality?
I looked at all of them and considering, you know, there's not much variance in each proposal, I think the consultant really is what would weigh it for me. And someone that knows our community, somebody that's worked in this school, I think that would my choice.
Yeah, I would generally agree, the only thing that kind of jumped up to me about the NESDAQ. Proposal is that there, the list of schools that they have assisted in recent years, there's very few in Connecticut, I think there's only three or four. One of them is Heber though, which is a neighbor, so that's significant. But it just made me wonder, is, is that going to be a disadvantage or potentially an advantage? Because they're pulling from a broader region or does it not make any difference?
I'm not sure that it does, to be honest with you, I, I think on some level. Mark Wenzler, after he left, after he retired. Was an interim superintendent or business director. I don't know, I think the list might be on there of like nine, ten, eleven places, so he knows. A lot of people. In a lot of areas to, to the same extent, I, I'm sure the CAE person knows a lot of people and I'm sure I know for a fact that Dave Irwin does as well, so. You know, there are quite a few people in the state of Connecticut that now hold an O nine three superintendent certification that are not currently working in that capacity. So, both Central and UConn have a program this year, you guys know I have an intern this year from UConn and the O nine three. So, you know, I think all three provide access to a plethora of, of an applicant pool.
Mark Wenzler is the interim superintendent ten pounds in Connecticut, in addition to being superintendentable.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I'm not clear that any one or the other would. Bring us an advantage and somehow tell us something different than the others are going to be about how we involve the community. Or how we go about interviewing people or.
Have we checked any references, like do they come, do they have references of other? Boards and other boards of education as to how.
I mean, they have the list here, have I called?
Yeah.
Like Hebron said, were you happy, I, I did, I did look at that. CAE list and I can't remember, Hebron was one of the people who had. Put their name on there, but there was several people who mentioned NESDAQ. And that they were happy with their services, I mean, they all, pretty much all the answers for all three of these. Said, oh, we were very happy and the person was, you know, very. Understanding of our individual needs as a community type, all of those things, so. Yeah, and there was nothing that really made one stand out above the other.
And you've used NESDAQ for other.
Correct.
Consulting services, so you're familiar with them and I mean, you are with CAE as well.
Correct, yeah, yeah, absolutely, and CES. When we did our first strategic plan, I don't know, like ten years ago, it was a CES person. It was, yeah, yeah, that worked on it, so, you know, I've had involvement with all three in, in different capacities, so.
I like the guy you got last time, that.
Lyle, yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah, I mean, all those. CES. Clients is, there is more in Connecticut, but they're a Connecticut company and. Some of them are local, but a lot of them are not.
Yeah, a lot from other sides.
Yeah, really down on the shore, very good county. I guess I have no, like, particularly strong feeling, I mean, there is something nice about having a local person. Seems to have very good experience and also a familiarity with the community. So, that anything that bumps them a little ahead, but. Again, I guess I don't feel like any one or the other is going to lead us down a different road than.
It, it is important, I think, tonight that you do select one though, because it is, it, it's quite a lengthy process. It honestly felt a little odd to me to be announcing my retirement. September, whatever it was, except that it's like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty days. Before the board has completed their process. As part of this, where you get someone signed and then that person has to give notice to their district. If you hire a sitting superintendent from someplace else. That superintendent will have to give ninety days' notice to their district in order to be able to start on July first, so. It seems odd, but the clock is ticking and it's important that, that we get moving on this process in order. For me to have some transition time. And by that, I mean, that person won't be seated yet, but. We can meet at night, we can have coffee on the weekends, have breakfast together, whatever the case may be, so that we can have some transition time. I had zero transition time when I arrived in Bolton and I just think it. You know, I've given, it's been my life's work here for twelve years and, and we've worked very hard as a team. To have a well-oiled machine and I want to be able to, to share where we're at. And, and they can take it from there with you as the board, but I'd like to be able to give someone some transition time, whoever is selected. Because I want to do what's right for this community.
Is there anyone who is not comfortable? Naming a search consultant?
Begin, I, I was. Like trying to get it down to one or two and I guess I would say CAE or the NESDAQ, I was thinking about the.
We originally talked to personnel also.
So, I don't. I, I don't know the person from NESDAQ, I know he was the superintendent here, I know nothing about him, but if you all have a good feeling about. Him from knowing and being, having that experience. I'd say that's a, and you get a discount, however, but if it's a good choice.
We like discounts.
Yeah, I mean, I got a good feeling about those anyway. I, I don't know, how do you know? Can't hire them all, so.
I mean, we'd probably get somebody good out of any one of the three and I'd be comfortable with any of them, but I think just having the person that knows our community and has worked here would tip it for me. And that's going to be my recommendation, but I would, I could support any of the three.
I suspect you're right, that sucks, but like I said, I don't think anybody is, any one of these is going to do anything that's drastically different from the other. Like, you know, they have named different methods of recruiting, but I. Sure that anybody who's interested in being a superintendent in Connecticut is in tune with any of those, so. I don't feel like we're going to be missing a group of people by hiring one or the other. So.
Does anyone want to recommend one first, one? Company?
I'll make a motion to approve NESDAQ, New England School Development Council as our executive search consultant.
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments or discussion further on this or? Circumpty?
I think we can have a big discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it the other day and I, I just. I can't say is, if I go and were to call every one of these school districts, if anybody was going to say anything negative about any of them. That wouldn't be very helpful or lead us down anything else, so. That would be fine, I mean. Anyone else?
It's under seconded.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Alright. So, will you reach out to NESDAQ, should I reach out to NESDAQ to be able to do it?
Yeah, why don't I do it tomorrow and I'll CC you?
Okay.
And then you and I will hear back from them and we'll get the contract going.
Okay.
Alright, perfect, thank you all.
So now it's real.
Yep.
Now it is really real.
It's getting really real.
I'm not going to lie to you, I had goosebumps, but it feels a little odd, but. Anyways, moving on to resignations.
You're going to change your mind?
Nope. Yes, I am sure. I have a grandbaby now, let's put that out there. And it's a girl.
So easy.
Had to wait twenty-nine years to buy pink, anyways, moving along.
Alright, resignations.
Okay, so we have a resignation from Ayla Thurston, who is a paraprofessional BCS. Music teacher, Mary Dombroskis. Who I believe was. Is with Jessica in Farmington now. And. BCS grade six math teacher, Alicia Rose, who's going to my old home, Timothy Edwards. And Monica's admin assistant, Cindy Truckneer, so I want to thank them all for their service to the Bolton Public Schools and I wish them well.
Alright, future business.
I guess we do, future business, we need to elect. Vice Chair.
Yes, we do have that future business and Kristen and I discussed it and I'm wondering if we should have all our new members seated. Especially better attendance, but. Yeah, so I.
Do without.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I'll show up to run the next.
Oh, don't do that.
I was in traffic on the way home, I was like, oh. Same as always, okay. So now we're looking for, most of them are going to executive session and to invite the superintendent for the purposes of discussing superintendent's goals. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Alright, thank you for coming, everybody is.
Good night.